All meeting to order. Dr. Tom, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call roll, please. Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Claude Heltar?
Yes.
Ms. Nywer?
Yes.
Ms. Edwards? Mr. Jester?
Here.
Colonel King?
Here.
All right, do we have any special guests to recognize today?
We do, band members from Eisenhower.
Here comes McCarthy.
Yeah, I'm having a just. Oh, here we go. Oh, wow. Look at that.
Guess we'll start with McCarthy.
So we would like to thank the board for the uniforms. I don't know, are we okay?
You're fine.
We just came off the marching field, it's 100 degrees out there, so they've been rehearsing for an hour or so.
They look fabulous.
They do look great.
Absolutely fabulous.
So, we thought we'd demonstrate a couple of things for you. This is the proper way to hold these shakeos. You see some people just carrying them by the strap, you don't. This is the proper way to carry them. And then if you guys will put them on now, this will be what it looks like when we get ready to go into performance.
Wow, you look very sharp.
Like a real man.
What's neat, one thing that you're gonna see on the field is that when we do maneuvers on the field, you'll go from this, kind of turn around, so you get a color change, turn around all the way around.
Oh, sure.
Turn back the other way. So you'll see that.
Wow.
Anyway, turn around, show them. So thank you all very much.
Oh, wow, y'all look like those. Sounds good.
Columbia blue.
Yes, we got our beautiful Columbia uniforms. We want to thank you all. My students have been so excited, we've been working on getting them on and figuring them all out. We just, we love them, and we appreciate it, and we can't wait to wear them on the field and show off to the whole community. Thank you so much.
Turn around, let's see the backs.
Thank you, guys. She's the dressmaker.
Trying to get out.
Let's see.
All right, LHS.
There's your dressmaker there.
These are just a couple of our students, we just got finished with practice. We appreciate everything, they're so excited to have these, that's all they talk about this year. And they are the first group that has tried them on in class. They're super excited, all the kids are like, what?
Your picture will be in the paper tomorrow.
And this is our dressmaker, your best thing, so that's why.
Turn around, let's see the backs. All right, oh yeah. Long overdue. Yes.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Wow, that was awesome. All of them look fabulous. Tickets are in the aisle.
Architect and construction manager, please.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Corey Miller with Architects and Partnership. Brief updates on the miscellaneous projects, Adams re-roof, we've got the final application for that submitted to the board for final approval, that'll close that project out. Eisenhower, we do have a change order on the agenda tonight. We briefly went over that a couple weeks ago. Does everyone have that packet in front of them? The change order for Eisenhower?
It's in the agenda.
It's in the agenda. Have you had the chance to review it, are there any questions? Would you like for me to start at the top and run through them again?
You explained it pretty good last time, before we stopped you.
I think we're all right.
I don't have any questions.
I don't.
All right, very good.
What about in a nutshell, just a few words?
How much money is the change order?
In a nutshell, contingency's still in very good shape. You know, we parked money in there for worst-case conditions like finding groundwater, or, you know, having other extenuating circumstances that haven't come up. And so we're in a position now that we can start to, you know, take some of those owner requests, some of the things that we felt might be best used only if the contingency was available, and start to consider those now, so.
We did really well adding that contingency like that, like we did at that meeting, didn't we? I felt, I've been feeling really, it was really a Thanks for the suggestion. Big collaboration, and I think that was great.
And we'll continue to be good stewards of it, you know. The aim is to return as much as possible at the end, but make sure that all the needs are met.
But, I mean, we add, when we did that contingency, part of it was for added, you know, we didn't know what the cost of things were gonna be, you know. Well, the steel was changing price every day. Everything was changing, and we knew there would be factors that we couldn't foresee, so, I'm very proud.
So far, everything's gone in our favor.
Yes, done well.
There is another change order for Whittier on the agenda that I didn't go through last time, so we'll give the rundown on that one. So currently, the contingency is at $36,020. This change order will have two items for net savings. Now, the first is for changing the tornado window type from the raided glass to regular glass with a tornado-rated door behind it that'll be shut in the event of a storm, for savings of $27,085. The other item is to add a washer dryer hookup at the janitor's closet, and that'll cost $4,966. Any questions on that one? The middle school furniture is ready to go. We're gonna send it out on the 12th to the preferred bidders that have been vetted with the other furniture projects here, and we've worked with the purchasing office to make sure our specs match that for their typical bids. So, pretty short updates tonight, I'll let Crossland take it from here.
The MacArthur Gym, it's in there, MacArthur Gym Auditorium.
Yes, we do have that contract on the agenda. Are there any questions on what's included in that?
Still looking at a start date of, what, you said?
I think it was in November.
November, yeah.
And so as we get closer to time, we'll work with the board to possibly do a special meeting to bring that contract on as soon as possible with the bid winner.
Do have one question on that, it's auditorium, gym, and administration areas?
Yes, sir.
Are those separate bid packets, or is it all or none?
So the way we'll structure it, we'll do a base bid of the auditorium, and then do a couple alternates for the other two. And so as the money's available, you can decide to do all three areas, or the auditorium will at least be done, that'll be the base bid, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Again, I'm Josh with Crossland Construction. We'll start with Whittier. Whittier went great last week, we got all the panels hung up on Whittier. We worked with Lynn and the communications department to make sure that the street right there by Whittier Elementary was, no one parked in the street, which made it a whole lot easier for our trucks getting in and out. And so I want to say thank you to the community for helping us out there. We're putting a gate in right there as well, there's an orange fence there right now with the gate coming in. All we ask is moving forward, no one park in front of that gate. You can park in the street, no big deal, just not in front of the gate. Right now, we're prepping the roof slab on Whittier, so there's a concrete panels across the top, and then we have a concrete slab on top of it, and we're pouring that tomorrow morning. So we're making good progress for that job. Only downfall, it did rain two and a half inches on Friday, and so the site got a little wet, but it is drying up very nicely today, and hopefully the heat continues up throughout the rest of the week. So, we're still on target for that one, shooting for transition during the Christmas break as far as getting the portable's out, get the teachers in, so.
I love it.
It's turned off.
Okay, I don't know about that, it was a doom and gloom type thing.
I don't know how it rang through, it's turned off.
Any questions on Whittier? It's kind of like Corey mentioned, so we have that change order, which is gonna help out a lot, because on the seven safe rooms, we had that broken glass, which ended up being extremely expensive to replace. And so with the new change we have, it's a standard glass with a FEMA-rated door, so it's gonna be better for the school in the long run.
Twenty-four thousand dollars, that's.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, more, it goes back to contingency, and then, hold the, the interstate back to the school, so.
That lead it to the community to show us how to do it.
Then we can do that gym auditorium.
The safe rooms, we're scheduling up some of the training, I'm reaching out, we're with Don Kegge and Jeremy Tanner to do a lot of the, uh, training that we need to do for the HVAC units and the different components. Um, in regards to the access control and the card readers, we spoke last board meeting, we put everything in, as far as the hardware and everything, um, where now the school security guys will come in and, uh, hook up the card reader. Uh, we'll go out there and, uh, our guys covered up the holes that the wires are at for the card readers, so we're gonna go out there and re-identify those and pull them back through for the, uh, security system. So, we shouldn't, um, any questions on the safe rooms or Whittier, I jump into middle school? So, on the middle school, uh, I put the little status report that we've been doing in front of you, uh, we're pro, we are progressing along nicely. Uh, this week, we actually picked up a little bit of time over the past couple of days, or a couple of weeks, um, since the last board meeting. Uh, we got roofings, they would come in a, a week earlier, which is gonna help everybody out, so they're gonna be here on the ninth, so, uh, on Monday. So, and then EFIS is coming on the sixteenth, and then, uh, slabs, we got the cafeteria slab poured last week, uh, our intent was to pour the kitchen slab this week, but with all the rain we knew had come in, we couldn't put the cardboard in the box with that, or cardboard in the, in the area without potentially losing it, so. We're pouring that on Saturday, so kitchen we pour it Saturday, and then, uh, we're still on track for concrete to be completed around the twenty-third, so that'll be all the slabs, all the grade beams, the foundation will be done. Steel, we met with them today, worked out a plan, we done by the first weekend of October, so around the fourth, we done with all the steel. And then, uh, we're still shooting right now for building dry-in around the fifteenth, fifteenth of December, and we're still working to get that even closer, you know, timeframe. As far as the change orders, the, the big change order that Corey mentioned, uh, gonna help out, get things moving along. And then, um, we did account for two more weather days last week, Tuesday was a lightning storm, and so with all the amount of lightning that we had, we couldn't even work on the site without, you know, everything going on. And then, of course, yeah, and then Friday, the, the monsoon on Friday, so, um, so kind of upcoming work, uh, again, mentioned EFIS is on the sixteenth. Um, the roof, we start on the ninth, and that'll be every bit of about three-quarters of the building, we'll be roofed, dried in. Auditorium slab still, we're gonna pour it on the sixteenth, and then kitchen slab, it says the ninth, but we're actually doing it on Saturday instead. And then, uh, the windows, we'll start putting windows in on Thursday, so you'll start seeing windows come in, so. Uh, just kind of progression, the south side of the building, uh, we'll, we'll have all the veneer, the brick veneer done on the south side this week, and then the mason will transition to the east side and focus on getting the east side completed. The courtyard, it's about halfway done, I put a picture of the courtyard in there as well. So, um, I know we've been talking about getting the board members there to the, the job site to take a walk-through, and if possible, we'd like to get you guys there Monday, uh, on the ninth, in the afternoon, so around about four o'clock, four-thirty, uh, whatever works with the board. That's what, and I'll give you guys a guided tour of the site, work kind of progresses down at that time, so it's the safety, uh, not as many workers, a little bit safer, so, if we can, that'd be next Monday, the ninth, uh, about four o'clock. And then, uh, other than that, the last thing is, uh, we do have cameras on the job site, and we've had three incidents of vandalism, uh, ranging from rocks breaking out the windows on our equipment to gathering of all the fire extinguishers and letting them all go off in one room. So, um, from, and then just graffiti on the floors, so, uh, just be cognizant, we have signs up now that say, you know, job site under surveillance, so, and we have more camel, more cameras being placed. So, I just wanted to make sure everybody's, everybody's aware, and the community's aware, that, uh, please stay off the job site, so. Any questions for the middle school, or anything for Crossland? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
We have departmental written reports in your packet, are there questions on any of the business operations or educational services reports? Uh, then we also have an action item, as Brown Hill, uh, has the estimate of needs, which needs, needs action on it tonight.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Oh, it's your birthday, happy birthday.
I'm twenty-one.
I'm only twenty-five, so I mean that.
Good evening, I'm Elizabeth Brown Hill, the CFO for Law and Public Schools, do you have a copy of the estimate of needs that you can look at?
It's in the agenda.
I think it's in our agenda.
It is.
It is. Sixty-one pages.
Sixty-one, I'm not gonna go over the entire
Good.
Unless you want me to. But if you will
Tell us what page.
If you would go back to the back of the document, on page one.
Page one?
Uh-huh, it's the statement of financial condition.
Okay.
Figure that's probably the key report that you wanna look at.
There's another page one.
Oh, there's another.
There's two page ones.
It's at the very end.
Okay. All right.
Let me know when you have it.
It's the one right before that.
Right before this one, okay.
There you go.
You could tell that I was looking at mine on the phone.
Yeah, sixty is.
Okay, page sixty, okay. Yeah, that dropped down, helps you.
Should be right after page fifty-four.
Fifty-four?
Mm-hmm.
We got sixty, is it?
Sixty's the second to last page.
Oh, mine is different than yours, I'm sorry.
It always works out that way, it's okay.
Okay, if you notice up at the top, uh, where it says cash fund balance at, uh, June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen? We had a balance of fourteen million, six hundred, three thousand, one hundred forty-five, sixty-nine, that is our carryover for the year. It is a decrease from the previous year, which was seventeen million, nine ninety-four, four thirty-three, thirty-seven. That decrease consists of three point three million, and if you recall, last year when we did the raises across the district, I reported that it was gonna cost anywhere between one, uh, one point five to two million, we were closer to the two million to fully fund, um, everyone across the district. So, with that said, it's very important that the district spends conservative, because this carryover amount is there not to supplement our spending, uh, as a cushion as the economy declines, we want to make sure that we keep a certain percent. So, I caution everyone across the district to not spend if you don't have to. And that includes adding positions if we really don't need to add positions, because right now, I can say the district is top-heavy when it comes to administrator positions. Our enrollment's decreasing, but we steadily hiring new personnel, and we can't afford to keep doing that if we want to sustain where we are.
Do you know how much our district has, how much the enrollment has declined from this year from last year, do you?
Um, let's see, at the end of the year, we were at like thirteen thousand, the year before that, it was like fourteen thousand.
Okay.
So, it's
A thousand now.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And that number, it changes from day to day.
Of course.
So, today, it may be one number, tomorrow, it could be jump up.
Yeah, I do, yeah, I was trying to think of, what's the, what's our deadline where we have to, that we get to actually get money? What?
October.
Yeah.
I thought it was October.
It is October.
It's Au, okay, that's what I thought.
October one.
Right, October one.
Okay.
Is what our funding will be based off of.
That's what I meant, yeah, okay, thank you.
So, between now and then, if we don't get any more students, if we continue to lose, the funds that we do collect from the state could be less than what the auditor has estimated.
Right.
Because he has us estimated to need about thirteen point seven million. That, between the carryover and what we're anticipating getting from the state.
Right.
So, that number, you know, based off of our enrollment.
Could be, okay, all right, thank you.
He has us collecting one hundred and three million, one eighty-one, five seventy-two from the state, but that number could change.
Right, okay, thank you.
And, um, also, he has us estimating to need about seven point five million to raise in our sinking fund, that number could change also. That number is an increase, from last year, it was five point four million, this year, it's seven point five million that we'll need to collect in addition. So, that may eat up some of the carryover as well. Do you guys have any questions? Um, another thing is our county mills, last year was thirteen point three four, this year it's at eighteen point, let's see, I know it's up five point nine four. So, it was, it's eighteen point seven eight mills this year, so the taxes, property taxes may go up a little bit. Do you guys have any other questions? Okay, I don't wanna bore you guys.
Oh, it's just fascinating.
If you have any questions after looking at it further, just email me or call me, and I'll answer those questions for you. Yes, and this is just temporary. So, it's just, um, based off of our end of year, he calculated, um, the amount that we'll need to sustain the year. We did collect, let's see, we collected one hundred and twenty-one million, one ninety-one, eight twenty-five in revenue, our expenditures were a hundred and twenty-four million last year. So, we've gotta find ways to cut those costs.
Okay, all right, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Do we have motion?
Second.
Call roll please.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywer?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Okay, so, part of the superintendent?
Action item seven A, we would propose to do an across-the-board twelve hundred and twenty-dollar pay raise to eligible certified staff. Uh, the law defines that as including certified employees working full-time as a teacher, principal, supervisor, administrator, counselor, librarian, or certified or registered nurse. And we would propose that to be across the board for those eligible employees.
Have any questions, anybody have a motion?
Make a move.
Second. Call roll please.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywer?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
One follow-up statement on that, that raise will be reflected for September on the October first check. October tenth, there will be a supplementary payroll to pay for the August. And that keeps the federal withholding obligation down for the employees if we break that into two checks.
Okay, perfect.
Uh, action item seven B, because of that raise, we do need to revise our salary schedules, and you have several salary schedules in your packet. Those that will be revised upwards by twelve twenty are the Oklahoma teacher certified salary schedule, the special education salary schedule, BOAG, vocational education, and national board certified teachers, um, schedules. The other schedules will not be revised, uh, they were not eligible for the raise under state law. Uh, we do have a revised schedule for you on extra duty, in that we've added two positions for extra duty, uh, the virtual teachers for our virtual academy, and the character ed sponsors.
Any questions?
Uh, those not eligible for the raise will receive their longevity and step increases. And have already received those in the, uh, paycheck just received.
Any questions?
Need for approval?
Second. Call roll please.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywer?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Actually, I see that with several different agenda items now, that we've taken action on the first one.
Okay, so we need to.
Yes, seven, seven B
We're on C.
Is
Yep.
Certified. And I don't know if you wanna take these all at once, seven C is support, seven D, extra duty.
Can we do them all at one time? Or do we need to do them all?
We only have two left.
We only have C.
Oh, okay.
I'll make a motion, we approve seven C and seven D.
Second. Call roll please.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywer?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
All right, seven E.
Seven E, uh, when Trey brought us an incentive plan for bus drivers, uh, it was brought to my attention, and we do have other drivers that drive daily, and that's their primary job. So, we'd like to extend the two hundred and fifty-dollar incentive for no fall accidents for the year to I see what you mean by jumping.
Yes. It will not stay put.
I get back down to it. Distribution delivery drivers that work out of Shoemaker, food service delivery drivers, custodial warehouse delivery drivers, and those with a law and transitional program that drive buses.
Need for approval? Second. Call roll please.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywer?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Seven F, we do have a contract with Workman Forensics to audit our Excel copier contract, uh, and they have provided us with two options on that. After consulting with, uh, Chuck Wade and Karen Wong, we, we feel like we should opt for option three, uh, retainer of five thousand, and they will bill us monthly. We feel like, uh, that might be a cho, cheaper option for us, and they will commence immediately once we approve this contract.
I'm vote for approval?
Second. Call roll.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter? Ms. Nywer?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
I'm trying to be a good president here and ask you, but I didn't see what.
Superintendent's announcements, we do have some good news to share, the, the LPS Police Department graduated their first academy with seven officers, seven new officers. That'll allow us to, uh, have someone at each site. And we had a graduation in here just last Friday.
I'm sorry, I, I couldn't attend that, I could not get away from work.
It was great.
It was good.
But I heard it was amazing. I watched it.
Had some real good cake, too.
I didn't eat the cake.
If, if you see the Five Eighty magazine, one of our teachers was highlighted in that, Dr. Jan Thomas was featured in theirs. Uh, she creates a unique learning environment in which her students know to expect the unexpected. Uh, her mother was the first PE teacher at Tomlinson.
Mine.
And, uh, we're, we're very fortunate to have teachers like Dr. Thomas.
Oh, yeah. Looks like a fun classroom.
Her mother was amazing, really was, wonderful woman.
Uh, just one other announcement for you, December twelfth, the, uh, Attorney General will have an open records, open, um, meeting record seminar on December twelfth at Great Plains, if you're interested in that.
What time is it, do you know? Does it have a time?
One to four.
Okay, thank you.
One to four, the twelfth of December?
Twelfth of December. And that would be the end of my
All right, the consent agenda, does anybody have anything they'd like removed from the consent agenda?
Need for the consent agenda.
Second.
Call roll please.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywer?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Okay, so now, do we have a need for an executive session?
We do.
Okay.
Make a motion when you go into executive session.
Second. Call roll please.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Nywer?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
And I would like to, uh, invite, uh, Chuck Wade to come in, and I'd also like to invite, um, Dr. Brown Hill to come in. I don't know if you're a doctor, but I said doctor. I'd rather err on the side of caution there. I'd rather err on the side of caution there.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter.
Yes.
Ms. Nyworth.
Yes.
Mr. Jester.
Yes.
All right, minutes of the executive session. The Board of Education went into executive session at 5:30 p.m. Members present included Carla Claude Felter, President, Patty Nyworth, Vice President, Mary Bradley, Kent Jester. Others present included Dr. Tom Thomas, Interim Superintendent, Chuck Wade, LPS School Attorney, Dr. Ken Baden, Interim Chief Operating Officer, Elizabeth Brown Hill, Chief Financial Officer. She entered at 5:30 and left at 5:40. The employee, items discussed included the employing, promoting or receiving resignation of individual certified and support salary personnel is listed on the Certified and Support Personnel Report. Executive Director of Secondary Education, interim Comp Troller, proposed changes in contract and job title for Sheila Ralph Purchasing Manager. During the executive session, the board discussed these items and no other items and no action was taken. The board returned to open session at 6:30 p.m. This constitutes the minutes of the executive session. All right. 13A, let me get back down here because my, of course it flips as soon as you don't... Okay.
13A is approval of employment of certified and support staff.
Move for approval.
You have those lists with you.
Second.
Call the roll please.
We'll call that Mr. Jester's.
I'll take that time.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter.
Yes.
Ms. Nyworth.
Yes.
Mr. Jester.
Yes.
13B, we'd like to recommend the employment of Rick Owens as the Executive Director of Secondary Education.
Move for approval.
Second. Call the roll please.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter.
Yes.
Ms. Nyworth.
Yes.
Mr. Jester.
Yes.
Item 13C, I'd like to recommend the employment of Lance Gibbs as interim Comp Troller.
Move for approval. Second. Call roll.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter.
Yes.
Ms. Nyworth.
Yes.
Mr. Jester.
Yes.
Item 13D, consideration and action regarding proposed change in contract and job title for Sheila Ralph Purchasing Manager.
I'd like to make a motion that we table this until we can get some further information.
Second. Call roll.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter.
Yes.
Ms. Nyworth.
Yes.
Mr. Jester.
Yes.
Item 14, we have no new business and our next regularly scheduled board meeting is Thursday, September 19th at 5 o'clock here.
Do we need to have any reason for any new board meeting dates? Any board announcements?
I want to say to Brenda Hatt and her team, I went over to the staff development and it was the one, the two sessions I was able to attend were awesome. You guys all did a great job in that.
Awesome. All right, do I have a motion to...
I make a motion when you adjourn.
Second. Call roll please.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter.
Yes.
Ms. Nyworth.
Yes.
Mr. Jester.
Yes.
Mr. Jester.